City of Milton Common Council Agenda to Order, Tuesday, January 5th, 2016, 7:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, the Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have an agenda. Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do we have anybody that's signed up to speak? Thank you Linda for signing up to speak.
Signed up in her mind.
I signed up, kind of. So the purpose really is that of follow-up because as I understand it, follow-up is very important to the council. And the council has been most generous, I feel, in their supportive things, so I wanted to follow up. First of all, in reference to the tree lighting, in your packet there was a very simple "thank you Dan Nelson" financial statement. It shows the donations of 2,411 that we received from a combination of businesses and families, which I was really excited about. Some in the sponsorship levels and others in amounts of $10 or $25, which I was also really pleased to see. The Parks Fund contributed 2,000. All of that went toward the purchase of the lights and cords and timers. Labor for the project was donated entirely by Badger State Maintenance. So I think some of this may be a little bit repetitive as I think the council meeting immediately after the tree lighting ceremony touched on some of it, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. So total money received were $4,411. Materials and supplies were $38,9292. So we actually have a rollover balance in our tree lighting fund of $518.08. So I'm super excited about that because that means we have a start, some seed money toward next year's. Unless everybody was just saying sweet nothings to me, I think everybody was really pleased with that. I for one was extraordinarily happy, just in the simplicity of it. Those of you that came, thank you. It was just a wonderfully sweet, nostalgic, simple way to celebrate the holiday. And it was such a joy to instigate, to be a part of. And just the feedback and the comments and the pictures were really outstanding. So I'm very excited that, at least from what I'm hearing from everyone, that this will be something that's continued. Thank you so much to Howie and his department, whoever always... Donnie Zimmerman said to me once when I approached him, "Here comes trouble." And I'm afraid that DPW thinks that of me because every time I have an idea, they seem to end up with a little bit more to do. But they do it so well and so willingly. And another lunch was bought as a thank you because you guys are great with that. So thank you Howie and your team. And thank you again to the council to approving funds. I'm happy to say that we won't be needing that $1,000 contingent that you had from the Celebrate Fund. So thanks, but no thanks proudly. Maybe we'll hitch up next year, for next year. But anyway, so that's kind of exciting. Also too, the second follow-up would be to that of remainder of remnants of DDAC materials. So as we now know, DDAC is no longer. It was moved into the Chamber House. And last year, we did DDAC kind of initiated a lot of things, such as the planning and to Al's article in the paper, there'd be some great improvements to Junction, so thank you for that and directing some funds that way. I'm not sure where that piece of that goes and who's going to be needling that. I'm always happy to do that, but I'm not sure where that belongs. But I hope that somebody will continue to work on those areas because I think it's super important. I did send out an email today from the DDAC account to all of those who were on the old DDAC list. So that was a combination of business members and common council members and government members and just plain old folks to find out what you want done. So the gist of the email was, if you don't want to receive them, please respond to "take me off" in the subject line, and I will do that. Also too, there were two events that were kind of spearheaded and originated with DDAC, and that was the Make a Difference Milton event. That was in the spring, kind of tying that along with the cleanup and the tree and Arbor Day and all of that. So Howie was a great help again on that. We had a lot of volunteers come in and do some projects. I think it was a great initiative, but I need to hear feedback. Do you want it to continue? If so, how do we do it? I don't think it necessarily has to be owned by one certain entity. I think because it's about improving the community, it should be a community event where the schools and the Chamber and the city and businesses and, you know, the nonprofit, you know, Lions Club, et cetera, Optimus Club, all those sorts of Cub Scouts are involved in it. But I would like some feedback on that. Certainly, it's not an agenda item this evening, but you all know how to get ahold of me. If you don't, ask somebody, they can tell you. The other one, of course, is it's a Merry Milton holiday. Do you want to see that continue? If so, how? Any events, any ideas, any thoughts, please share them because we want this to be, again, a communal effort to make it better. And then the third item on that email that went out to everyone was that of what to do with the focus on Goodrich and Junction. So when they merged DDAC with the Chamber, they made me chair of the Business Advocacy Committee. So one of the things that we do now is we take a look at legislative issues. For example, the last one was with the winery extending their hours. Do we want them to do that? How do we want to go to bat for them as a Chamber member? But beyond that, they said, because I said, "What about the downtowns?" They said, "Well, you can make task force underneath your committee if you want to continue working on them." So that part of that email was, "Do you want me to continue working on them?" My thought was then we would create two sub-task force, one for Goodrich with an emphasis on finding ways to improve and renovate the community house, and the other for Junction, finding a shelter for that area and just other kind of events as needed. And that way, those interested in Goodrich could sign up for that and go to those meetings, those interested in Junction could go to those, and of course, people interested in both can come to both. So I'm looking for feedback as to kind of what I started and what we were talking about, not to leave those ends loose, what you want from me to push for. Because anything then that folks want, I need to go to the Chamber, have a conversation with Danny, and then of course, it has to go to the Board to be approved there. So if my work is done, you can say that, and I'll go quietly into the good night. If you want to continue work on these, please give me your feedback on what you would like me to continue to bring to the table. Hopefully, DPW won't consider me too much trouble. So I think, yeah, that's it. That's all I had to say. Any questions of me at this time? Wonderful.
But we thank you for all your work. It was really nice.
Well, it's not work, really.
Your party spirit is much better than we ever anticipated.
Well, good. It's really been a joy. I enjoy it quite a bit. So let me know what you want of me and what you want me to continue or discontinue. You know how to get ahold of me, and thank you again very much for your support and your attention.
Thank you Linda, and thank you for the follow-up. We really do appreciate it.
Well, I'll be back.
Good night. Thank you.
Item number four, approval of the consent agenda?
Approval of the consent agenda, sorry. And Teresa moved, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has been approved. Item number five, we had on, in case we needed a primary for the election of alderpersons, but in fact, we do not. And I don't know, Elena, if you have anything to comment or share, or you can wait till your report at the end.
No, I can, yeah. We did end up with six candidates, so as you mentioned, a primary is not going to be needed. They're all going to show up on the April ballot, so I can give the names during the report.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Do you have any questions about that? It was if there was more than double the vacancies, is that my understanding of it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Item number six, discussion of possible action regarding easement for Booster Project on Pierce Farms' property.
We have an item on the agenda this evening in which we would be acquiring an easement from Pierce Farms, or Mike Pierce. His property located down by Cross Ridge Park. This easement is required as part of the Water Main Project that was discussed last fall, that the large borrowing activity that, well, large, well, yes, I guess borrowing activity that took place in the water fund to help with that low-pressure system, to create some redundancies in the systems and some loops in the systems for the booster stations. So we'd be acquiring an easement, or rather, long easement from Mike Pierce in order to execute those improvements. We had some negotiations with Mr. Pierce and arrived at a sum of $5,000 for that easement, which was commensurate with the amount that we were paid by Northern Natural Gas right up the road for their easement that they purchased from us. So we felt that that was a reasonable dollar value for that easement. It is of great benefit to Mr. Pierce as well, but it's of great benefit to those neighborhoods up there in the Tower Hill subdivision as well, so those existing residents. So we would need approval for that, to execute that agreement with Mr. Pierce.
Is there any questions?
I'll move that we approve the $5,000 easement for Pierce Farms.
Circle. There's a motion in a second. Any further questions or discussion?
I was just wondering, is this, the funding for this, is that coming out of the water?
The utility.
Okay.
Correct.
Any further discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Um, well then, I almost feel guilty having y'all come out. Our next meeting date is January 19th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Item number eight is general items. And then, just a heads up, item number nine is team building exercise. And remember, in December, we talked about all of us having some ideas of goals that we wanted for the City of Milton and the council for 2016. So general items. My assistant will be getting the easel.
I just have a question for a general item for Howie. Are we still not able to have the ice rink?
We're going to try to scrape it tomorrow to get the snow off. The frost is still underneath the snow, so if we sink in while we're trying to scrape the snow off, we have to quit. Otherwise, we're going to have ruts all over the... Now we'll just have to let it freeze some more, but it's going to be... The only reason we're scraping it off is to see if the rain on Thursday and Friday will melt what's left of that snow. And then maybe that'll just stay on top of there. And then over the weekend, if it gets down as cold as it's supposed to, then it might freeze some of the top layer. We might be able to make a smaller rink, but not the regular full-size one. So we're going to try it, scrape it off, and then maybe try it next week. You know, we'll have to let it set this weekend. But it looks like it's supposed to be regular weather, you know, for a couple of weeks for this time of year after this weekend. Then it's going to be a couple of more warm days, and then a couple regular, and then warm again. So it's still going to be up and down, but the regular temperature is still going to be close to 30, so it won't be very easy to make one. But we'll see if we can make a smaller rink instead of the entire thing.
So even if it is a smaller rink, we will not have the warming house open, or will we have that open?
It won't be open until there is ice there, but right now, it's not planned to open it up, so.
Okay. Our chief has so generously volunteered.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. They asked me if they needed to prepare calls and said nobody really. So I thought that was just for you guys.
Just for us to develop and share our goals for 2016, and this is an exercise that I'll do with employees too at some point. Al and I have discussed about doing some employee rounding stuff too.
Okay. Focused on the department, or am I thinking bigger than that?
Whatever you want. Think as narrow or as...
So I just took delivery on five body cams. And so that's one of my big things, at least in the immediate future, is implementing that program. And thereby creating broader transparency and accountability to the city.
It is very exciting. Linda?
Well, I really hope to take this a little serious, and I made quite a list here.
Why don't you give us your top two?
Okay. I think that my top two are...
She can share.
I would like to see the city emphasize more our Ice Age Trail and work more closer with the Ice Age, the Bar County Ice Age group, so that we can accommodate that group of people that come through the city. And then my second is, my personal, is that I intend to reach out to businesses, industry, and citizens more so about what kind of community events that we have going on. And Indonesia promotes courier because they have all that information.
So promoting the courier, I don't think that's a good idea.
Am I?
Well, since you had asked me what, you know, I wanted for the new year, I wrote down my wishes, which, okay. Okay. I think that we need to safeguard the process of our elected officials. Last year's ad hoc committee worked on a procedure to replace vacant alderperson positions, and I am trusting that this will come to be, oh, an ordinance before the next election so that that is clarified. Our process was not clear before. We also need to address the correct information that is given out for the list of names needed on a nomination ballot. It went from 20 to 50, even though when you read the ballots, it says that they were revised in 2014, but that was not acknowledged. We need to have our city clerk acknowledge, when it says revision on the bottom, what the revision is. This was not done. We need a city clerk that is present in the office more. I very much find it missing not to be able to get ahold of the clerk. There's many, many factors in there, but I would like the focus to be on your presence all the time. And if that is something that I feel we need, and we also need to remind the city administrator that he works for the council. And when I, as a council member, asked, going into a closed session in April, what this was about, you refused to answer me. You refused to answer me.
So team building is to build consensus and not for personal attacks.
What I find is that this...
Focus on what your goals are for the City of Milton, and the conversations that should be taking place outside of our team building. I would appreciate that, but I do, I appreciate you staying and participating.
This is part of what the team needs to build.
Well, we're focused on streets, and that's what team building is about. So that's what my focus is, and I think we've had several discussions about different team building activities, and we have addressed some of your concerns, but thank you. Teresa?
Yes. You know, I think that while I won't be here all year long, there are some things that we can build on. There are many skills that each of the people on the council have, and I've had an opportunity to watch those skills grow over the past few years. And I think that each person has been assigned to different committees, different roles that they play, as well as people that work in different departments. My frustration has been that each person has not had an opportunity to be recognized for that. So my goal would be for each of us to allow those people to be able to do those roles and to, I guess, to do their jobs without all of us jumping in and trying to do them for them. We need to recognize that we all have the ability to do that job and report back to everyone about everything that's going on in our area, but, you know, but to allow, you know, give us the space to do that work.
Does this reflect it?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to...
Yeah, I know I'm going on and on and on.
No, no.
You know, that we give those assignments to be the head of your committee to do that. And let them go. Not often deep in, but, you know, recognize they have the ability to do it.
Thank you.
Oh, Elena?
Facing an election year where we're going to have four elections, kind of been focusing on our election officials. The career was kind enough to kind of put an article out there, and we've got a lot of new election officials, so I'm excited about that. And then at the beginning of the year, I had approached the high school to see if we could get some of our high school students. And that's been kind of quiet, but I thought as soon as they come back from break, I do hope to try and get some of our high school students maybe to work at the polls. So just getting more people involved in the election process.
Al?
Through 2016, this process is a good segue into kind of the year-long goal-setting and evaluation process that we hope to implement, starting here in January. So it'll be some of the first time that anything like that's ever happened in the organization. So it'll be a long process, but it'll be hopefully a good one that helps people kind of achieve their professional and personal goals.
Implement innovative year-long evaluation process?
Yep.
I would like to see us get some concrete plans for a new fire station and go ahead with that. And if there's any leftover, that 12th officer that our chief would like, I'd like to see him have that. I think that's also a much needed.
Yeah, apparently it is going to be much needed. Jerry?
Well, staying on the firehouse theme, either via the commission or council, probably shoring up the code violations, getting the fire department up to code.
Dean, did everybody take your thunder?
No. I guess during the last eight years, we've made some tremendous strides, and we did so really because we had a set, a set of priorities that we were religious about. And the last year or so, we've kind of wavered a little bit, kind of a shotgun approach to some things, and I'd like to see us get back on the hard and fast priority projects, where you start one and you don't get off it till it's done. And it's Maxine's idea there, we're never going to get to that fire station unless we do exactly that.
And that's what this exercise is leading up to, so thank you. Anna, you can't tell us we just can't spend money. There has to be more.
Oh, we're at our levy limit, so. I don't make those rules. I'm just the messenger, so you can't kill me. To expand our electronic payment offerings, we've done a really good job of collecting a lot of electronic payments through utility bills. I'd like to expand it to some of the other licenses and other things that we offer.
Mark? Besides getting paid, Mark? Because we use you as a budget. Direction you would like to take?
You better talk, Mark, or you won't get paid tonight.
Let him fill the counter.
I think it was this long, this sort of...
Yeah.
Kind of mean.
As a goal, I would look forward to working with the council.
We gotta work on this, get some more to go.
We had quite a bit in 15. Yeah, hopefully there's a couple things coming.
Howie?
Let's see.
Well, you probably have a hundred things to do yet.
If I want, yeah. Let's see. I would say probably, I know we've already talked about 2017 being maybe a possible short budget year, but it'd be to work on this year how to maintain services and maybe improve services, have more things instead of less all the time. And also, we've got some modernization of a few possible ordinances that some of the businesses ask about. Not redo all the ordinances because everybody thinks that one thing that they can't do is something just against them, but it's not. They don't understand the, it's for everybody, not just one person. So, but some of them do need modernizing, some of our ordinances, assigns a few of them. Just times change, it's just times have changed, some of those from the 1960s up to now, but not everything, because things are still working pretty well. And also, just some of the positive things. We have a lot of negative things about the way people's properties look and some of those things, and maybe it's to get some understanding out on how sometimes their negative property affects everyone else, and that there's ways to get things fixed without just ignoring us and getting fines. So that's...
So some of my goals would be to complete projects that we already started, so get the library project done, implement the recommendations from the RW report. And we already have a committee that's in the process of forming to do that, so we already got a start on that, so that's great. I'd like to do some goal-setting and prioritizing around our safety departments and expand on working with other jurisdictions in implementing some new service change, I don't know, what do you want to call it? Service change direction that we're going in with the sheriff's office, so. I'd like to find ways to invest in the City of Milton, because I look at what we've done so far, and we've done a lot of investing. We started the library project, we did park review, we're looking at doing March at Row, we're looking at how do we implement both plans for Goodrich and for Junction Square. So what are ways that we can invest within... So, what are ways that we can invest within our budget without borrowing? That was our goal. So, continued investment, I don't think it's smart and responsible governing to not continually invest in your... Any way that you can find that's gonna make things better, either for our residents and service delivery, like some of you talked about, or attracting new businesses and getting developments started out by the bypass. There's so many things that we can look at doing, so we always have to keep that in the forefront. It's how are we gonna work together to continually invest in Milton? I wanna work on doing what's called some employee rounding and meeting with individual employees and discussing with them. This is something Al and I talked about doing, is talking to them about how, how is their workplace going? Do they have what they need to do their jobs? Do they have any suggestions for improving any processes that we have? Ways that we can work together? I wanna complete this goal-setting process with the council, and then do some goal-setting with the organization overall. And many municipalities have what they call meetings of the whole, which I think it would be a great idea for all of us to get together, employees, department heads, and council, and have a big meeting and prioritize our goals. And I think Davey would like that. Get some priorities set. And the other thing I wanna continue to do is complete the recommendations from the ad hoc committee, continue with team building. We're gonna have at least one new person on the city council, so we wanna do some training on council procedures, and I'm sure Mark will love to help us out with that. And we, we've talked to people at Black Pop Tech to come in and do some training, so we'll all hear the same message on the same things. So, just continually growing as a whole for city staff and city council. So, I'm probably not gonna write all that down, but you get the gist of it. And the other thing I'd like to do is have more communication with the council on goals and suggestions throughout the entire year, that we don't have to just wait for team building or special occasions, that, you know, that we would have an ongoing dialogue, and people would feel free to contact me, or Al, or anybody else, if you have any questions or concerns, to continue that dialogue. And I think it's important that we have difficult conversations when we have challenges or situations. We have to have those conversations with each other and together, so we can move on. I know that it's always an adjustment when you have a new elected official. You got a new mayor in 2015. We're gonna have a new council person, for sure, in 2016. So, there's always a regrouping and a readjusting, and I look forward to positively moving forward in 2016. Well, thank you very much for pressing the page. And I'll try to get these typed up and compiled, and then we'll move on to talk with other department heads and city staff. Any suggestions? Dave looks like he's gonna run, so I better give the... Rest yourselves? Right? Mayor and Alderperson reports. So, let's start with Dave.
If I had mentioned this at the last city council meeting, we had a young lady from the high school French club who contacted me about putting a peace garden into Veterans Park. And it is something that we're gonna have on our next agenda.
Yeah, for Parks and Rec.
For Parks and Rec, yep. And it's very cool. She's, it was, she brought it up to her director, and then it has also gone over to the Spanish club, so they are also going to participate. And then, apparently, it's just gone viral on Facebook, and people across the country are doing it. And this was, of course, in honor of France and the attacks that they had gone through. But, I, I wanted to make sure that I shared that with you, because here we go, another expansion to our Veterans Park. You know, there could just never be enough of that. And then, I also just wanted to mention, just that we have this little baby boom that's going on, so I, I really feel like I have to just let you know that part of our comprehensive plan at Parks and Rec is to put toddler swings in our parks. So, that's, that's a goal that we will be working on this year.
The only thing I have to tell you all is that I received a call from a recruit Welch tonight, who I have not spoken to since October 27th. And that was really exciting for me. And it looks like he will be graduating January 22nd. Teresa has known recruit Welch for a very long time. Yes, so that's my report tonight. City Administrator?
I'm finishing up my last week of Mr. Mom this week, and then be back in full swing next week.
Thank you, and congratulations. Um, no Chief of Fire, Police report?
Well, I already previewed one of my news items. The body cams are in, so that'll be one of the things I'll be working on wholeheartedly next week. This week, I am attending a week-long new chief and sheriff school sponsored by the Department of Justice. I'm getting lots of ideas and work to do from that, so my staff is probably thrilled. I've gone for a week in collecting all of these things. So, we'll be creating a lot of goals, I guess, from that training. And had a great holiday season, and we're off and running.
Thank you. Deputy Treasurer? Sorry. I always associate treasurer with Dan.
Yeah, I just wanted to report on the six candidates that we have received papers for running for Alderperson here in the April election. So, we, and this is just in the order that I've received campaign registration statements, so there's no rhyme or reason to this order other than that. So, Linda Clark, Larry A. Lane, Ryan Holbrook, Carl Sanger, David J. Adams, and Jerry R. Ellison are our six candidates.
Thank you very much. Uh, no Director of the Library, Finance Director?
I got nothing. We got pretty limited work this week, so.
Director of Public Works?
We started cutting some trees in the parks this week, the Emerald Ash Bore Trees. So, started on south, north Goodrich, and south Goodrich will have some. And then, up at the library, there are some ash trees, but also, the ones in the front for the expansion have to get cut, so our guys will be removing those. All, all these trees will get replaced, but it's not the same as, you know, the new small tree's not the same as a 50-year-old tree, but, but they will get replaced later in the spring. So, just a Christmas tree pickup continues through the month. If it stays cold, we may try to make a smaller version of the ice rink, but that's 50/50 at best right now. And also, there's still salted sand down at the garage, and we have had to send out, we sent out about 25 sidewalk notices. We tried to give people extra time to get them done, but they're, they're going out to people that aren't really even trying to shovel their sidewalks. You have to at least make an effort on it. And even in the ordinance, it says if you can't shovel it all the way down, if you can get the sand and cover it, so it's not a slippery surface, that'll even pass for inspection. So, so it's just, you know, the effort just to try to get them clear, so.
Okay, no municipal court, 20 closed session, Teresa? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, the motion carries. We'll go...